Okay, I think we closed the closed session. Do we need to reopen the regular meeting?
We already did.
Okay, that was all. Okay, well, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, we're -- we're all still here. We welcome everyone. It's a little bit different tonight coming out of a closed session. We opened our public meeting, then went immediately into closed session, closed it out, and now we're proceeding with the regular meeting, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
We did roll call.
Then we'll go to the -- I think we did approval of the agenda already, but we did approve the minutes in the Bill of Warrants. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion. I propose a motion to approve the consent agenda item B as presented within the reading.
Support. We have motion, we have support, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Moving on to the Bills of Warrants, do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve Bills of Warrant number 14225, paid in the amount of $49,015.41, and Bills Warrant number 14226, unpaid in the amount of $2,103.7 as presented within the reading. No credit card?
Okay.
Support.
We have motion, we have support, any discussion, questions? We'll do a roll call vote.
Perry.
Yes.
Enick.
Yes.
Ozel.
Yes.
Waitman.
Yeah, yes.
Rudolph Steed.
Yes.
Wong.
Yes.
Dear Gardner.
Yes, thank you very much, motion carried. We have no presentation tonight, we'll move on to the Mayor's Report. Like I said earlier, it's going to be an action-packed meeting, we appreciate everybody's patience with allowing us to meet with our attorney over some very important legal matters concerning the city. I had a discussion with the engineers for the project for the bridge, the question came up, when are they going to remove the silt fence? I hadn't talked to them a while, I gave them a call, they actually were going to come out this week and do it. I assume it was already done, that was early in the week that I talked to them, that they're doing a checklist, they still have to do some more work, there's something that's not right on the surface of the bridge that they have to seal, so they will be doing sometime during the summer, some seal work on the bridge. It will involve closing it down to one lane, the bridge will be open, but it'll be traffic going, both two-way traffic in one lane with flaggers on the bridge directing traffic back and forth across that one lane. I told them that we have a Freedom Festival, do not do it there, they said, okay, that's not a problem, they're not going to interfere with our Freedom Festival. The beach traffic is heating up, as we have all seen, you can measure it with the temperature, when the temperature gets hot, it's packed, and temperature has been very spotty, we've had a lot of cold. Revenue is down just a little bit from the early spring, but as soon as we get a hot day, it's packed down there, and I thank Kelly Laro and the DDA for always taking notes, we're always refining, we're always talking, and always improving that process, blocking off spaces, working with the Police Department and Chief Van Der Ree on enforcement to get that out of control, get good habits, starting right out from the beginning of the year here, teaching everybody how this thing works. We do need some more signage, that's really our greatest need right now, directing traffic because both parking lots get completely full, leading them to alternate parking, things like that, we're all discussing that, where we have signage for the beach, for the beach rules and the rules on the pier, no dogs, things like that. Dave is working on getting those signs in place, and we will keep improving on that too. We want to make it a good experience for everybody involved, our visitors and the residents, we're putting a lot of time into that. I want to thank everyone who submitted your nominations for Citizen of the Year, the handsome plaque is in and ready for the engraving of the Citizen of the Year, the distinguished panel of judges, as soon as they make their decision, we will get that in order, we look forward to presenting that award at Freedom Festival, hope you all come out for that. For now, the nominations aren't closed though. Every year, a group called Pedal Across Lower Michigan, the Palm Ride, they ride from here to here, they ride from Lake Michigan to the east side of the state, either Lake Huron, Lake St. Clair, or this year, it's going to be to Lake Erie, they will be coming in on Friday, the 27th, that's the day before the Freedom Festival. Now, they'll be coming in in the morning about 10 o'clock, it'll be about 600 riders that will be riding in, I'm sending the alert to local businesses because it's very lucrative during that time, they're not here very long, but they all seem to like a cold drink when they get here.
Can you also put that on, not to interrupt, but can you also put that on the Luna Pier Facebook page to note, so that it can get shared to notify our residents that it's coming to?
Yes, 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 I do that, they dropped off a poster to show, we can hang those, a couple of posters we can hang up, and I'll do a post about that, just let everybody know what's going on, they won't last very long, they'll just, they'll actually ride in at their own pace, they're only coming from Dundee, so they'll ride in at their own pace, and by 10 o'clock, they want to gather and do a group ride over to Erie, or over to the school, Mason High School, where their cars are parked, and they'll have their last meal together before they all get in their cars and go home. So we look forward to that on Friday morning, and we've discussed it with the police and made sure it's not going to interfere with the preparations for the Freedom Festival. Our application for Category B funding to repay Ganya Road has been submitted through Fleyce and Vandenbrink, we should learn results by late summer, early fall, and then we can get started on the engineering part of that, to start the work as soon as possible if we get that grant, so depending on the awarding of that grant, we have a very strong case for that. I'm really pleased with our planning commission, part of our meeting tonight, it's going to be an intense meeting, we have a lot on the agenda with our master plan, they've put a lot of work, a lot of people going back a number of years here have really worked hard on that, I really thank our planning commission, and our three groups, I just want to call out and shout out to them, is the DDA and the Parks and Recreation, working together, lots of great things happening with our parks, I really thank Diana and her team, Jennifer Grothar, all the members of the Parks Commission, and the DDA as well, they share a space down there at First Street Park, Memorial Park, it's actually Parks and Rec, but it's inside the DDA district, and they're really working together, making things happen down there, they're really making good progress, I'm just really pleased with that, and I really thank them for all their hard work. They have a great vision going forward, and some TIF funding to work with, so we're looking forward to great things there. That's all I have for my report, any questions? If not, we'll move on to the department reports. I was hoping Police Van Der Ree, their Chief Van Der Ree was going to be here to present, but he's been working actually a lot of hours this week. I will steal his thunder through Derek Welton, we got a tip that Flat Rock was selling some police cars, they're renewing their fleet, and they had some cars that they might be willing to sell, well, we ended up with a really good deal on a car there, he has money, has a budget to buy it, it's $3,000, and it comes very well-equipped, and he sent an email out to explain all of that, but that will, it's a good stopgap measure, since we're down a car, that, the one that blew the engine is not going to be on the road before Freedom Festival, this car will fill in nicely for that, and it's really ready to go, all the, the equipment wouldn't fit in the new car, so, except for the essential things that are tied directly to their department, they let it go with the radar and everything for that, so we're really pleased with that. Fire report is in your packet, they are busy, building report looks very encouraging there. Let me get my other -- now, do we have any committee reports? DDA?
So, we met a week earlier, so when we had our last meeting, I gave that update, so we haven't had a meeting since.
Okay. All right, I know there's some work on a cooperative work with a big chair, maybe?
Actually, yes.
We won't go into detail there, but just tease a little bit.
We do have some folks who are looking at volunteering time and material for the building of a giant Adirondack chair, so, I know we talked about getting one initially through the DDA, via DDA funds, but it's ongoing discussion on that, but it looks like we may have some folks willing to volunteer materials and time, so we're pretty excited about that. Joe Pazinski, Connie Cole, and Dave West are in communication.
And they're hoping to have it for the Freedom Fest?
That would be the idea?
Hoping.
That would be the idea?
Yeah.
Fingers crossed. Thank you, Jim.
Yep, Parks and Rec, the report is in there, but there's always more you can add, Diana?
Well, it's pretty exciting times, we had a meeting last, this Tuesday, and just to show how all our committees are short of members, and so is Parks and Rec, we have four members at the time, so we have openings too, but Lindsay Maholski and her husband came with many of their neighbors because they're interested in proving Seventh Street Park, and we have some solid plans, and we had some money still in the budget, and we're planning to paint the basketball court, the pavilion, the playground equipment, and also plant some flowers there, so things happen when people come together, we're doing some work at, we also had volunteers, actually our fire chief and Steve Jotar have gotten together, and they're going to rebuild the benches in all three parks.
Excellent.
So, I mean, there's so many things happening, we'd like to get new, but we can rebuild the benches for like $125 a bench, so we have to say yes.
Yes, that's.
So we're saying yes to that, DDA is working with Parks and Rec, we came together to get some more financial funding for that island there at Harold and Luna Pier, and we're working together on the night market, so a lot of exciting things happening, and we do have openings on Parks and Rec.
Yes, and I'll second that pitch, we really need our volunteers and people in the city to be involved, and when you see things that want to be done, you can be part of that, and we won't.
And keep an eye on Seventh Street, that'll show you what volunteers and just getting your neighbors to help will do.
Yep, and we can work around your schedule. Planning, I don't have a lot there, we'll cover more in old business and in our new business today. So moving on to old business, the planning commission recommendation for the marijuana facility overlay, there is a drawing which basically would expand it to include the strip mall, the Luna Pier Plaza, I should say, Luna Pier Plaza, better word for it, and the planning commission did recommend expanding that overlay, and that letter is in the packet. Donna Vance expressed her will to serve, oh, Resolution Number, yeah, thank you Charlie, Resolution Number 979, adopting the master plan. Hunter here from McKenna Group, make sure he knows he didn't drive down here just for nothing, I don't want to leave that out. Appointment of Donna Vance now to the Luna Pier Housing Commission, she was on it before, she comes highly recommended, and I know the director is really happy to have her back again. Applied Innovation Canon Copier Contract, is there anything you want to expound on there, Charlie?
They sent us quotes on two different, they sent us quotes on two different copiers, I put in the motion, the copier that I would like to get, which is the faster one, and both of their quotes are actually less expensive than what we're currently paying.
And Charlie has done a lot with the city newsletter, so this will really help with that too.
It's the newsletter that I don't, it takes five and a half hours as it is, so I don't want to.
Did you start that yet?
No.
I got an addition to the Freedom Fest that I'll tell you about.
That newsletter's done.
Oh, never mind then.
Okay, yeah, we won't get up for that.
That won't be in.
Okay, thank you Charlie. Renius and Renius Assessor Contract, it came to our attention that they've been working without a contract, they just never submitted it, we've used them before, and during COVID when the contract expired, neither one of us noticed that the terms were the same for a lot of years, and now during the budget process, we realized that we should have a contract with them, and that is in the packet. They do a great job, I'm really, you know, happy with the work that they do, they're very familiar with the properties here, and have been very responsive anytime we have a question or a problem to solve with it. Budget amendments, I won't read through them, we would be here too long to do that, but they are available, if anybody from the public wants to see them, we will get you a copy, and council had time to review them, and the Budget Committee, Connie Cole, have been working very hard to put that together. We're going to have some budget items for this meeting and the last meeting of the month, which is June 24th, that ends our, that's the last meeting before the end of our fiscal year at June 30th, so there's always little adjustments you make to close out this budget and go into the next year, next fiscal year. Any questions on any of those items, council? If not, we'll move on to community input, we allow everyone time to address council, open microphone, we'll record it, you have five minutes to speak to us, and Charlie will use the timer here, but we welcome your comments now, and the floor is open, if anybody wants to, yes, Charlie, you just tell us your name.
Charlie from 123 Oak Street. As much as I appreciate the sign down by the store, you didn't put one down by the post office, and I left you a note.
The crosswalk sign?
I mean, I think there should be one at every crosswalk.
There should be two at every crosswalk.
Right, right.
Well, it's, I mean, it is Michigan law, and it's not standard practice to put a sign at every crosswalk, but we can look into that, because that is a high-traffic area.
Yeah, it is, it's right there by the post office.
It's very, I will say, it's very difficult on the north side of the road, east of the post office, because there's no place to put a sign, it's all concrete and.
Well, FYI, I mean, I've crossed there, and nobody stops, no cars stop, so, and if you got a driver's license in Michigan, you think you'd have the brains, you do have to stop.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of people who don't, summer's coming, you know what that's like.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we'll, it's on, we have a lot of signs to, that we're working on, we'll add that in there.
One of the stand-up ones that actually go on the median of the road if there's no posts.
Okay.
For little people, yes.
Yeah, we can work that out. Yes, yeah, safety is important, and I learned that at the farmer's market, how important that is to control speed through there, this four-way stop really helped a lot, but we are, we don't want to have an accident, so we'll follow up on that.
Freddie Dietmeyer, 1007-50, Allen Street, excuse me, apologize for my allergies. First and foremost, thank you folks, I appreciate you, what you do, coming here, you know, twice a month, and it's a beautiful summer day, you could be at home, join in with your families, but you're here with us, right? So thank you for that. Counselor, I know you were supposed to give us information back on the blight that was supposed to be at the last meeting, which was three weeks ago, I don't know if you have an update for us yet on that. Next, I'm still working on information in regards to speed months coming from MDLC, I have not heard back on that, just wanted to give you guys an update since I brought it up, and I'm still also waiting for direction in regards to signs along 75. I've been asked to reach out to our congressman, so maybe our representative from Michigan can help us out in getting us one of those, we'll see what we can do in regards to that. Lastly, in regards to the marijuana facility there at Strip Mall Plaza, you know, they've made some changes, you know, I give them credit for that, we've been at this for over seven months, and they're finally actually putting together a plan, you know, they didn't think they'd have a hard time rolling into our small town because we are a desperate area for money, right? I'm just going to ask you guys to do the right thing, you know, we've asked before not to put something there, as the people, not in the plaza, we have another opportunity to come in behind it, so we do have competition with Green Labs, in regards to the businesses in our town, Green Labs has not boosted any of the economy, Exit 11 hasn't had a boost in their economy, one of their people actually went out of business, from what I've been told, the hot dog stand, so they may have seen a rise in other areas, but we haven't seen it here, and we have one here, so just some things to consider, you know, you, again, you have the plan in front of you, what they proposed, they still haven't done anything with the property, haven't fixed the parking lot, they got plans to fix it, if you give them what they want, so I don't know if you want to call that a quid pro quo, because if they don't get it, they're going to leave, and they did take off their other quid pro quo, donating to the Freedom Festival, but that's either here or there, but again, it's, you can see between the lines, hopefully, they thought they were going to roll in, hopefully you guys don't fall for it. I appreciate your time again, thank you so much, have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it, I appreciate you. I did forget one thing, can I have one second, Ben? This was about the Planning Commission. You do have a little bit of time left.
Sorry, one more thing, we did officially change the Planning Commission time to 6:00 PM, we're trying to get more participation, it's still on that, you know, the same Tuesday of the month, but we're trying to get more participation from the community, that's why we changed it, so I did forget about that, so thank you again.
I was going to bring it up.
Thank you, Freddie.
Andrew F. Kovich, 1556 Cecil F. Y. Street, Detroit, I'm here on behalf of the property owners of the Luna Pier Plaza. At the last meeting, we were asked about several different additions or requests for clarification on what our stance is for commitments to the property, I provided you all with an electronic copy, as well as a paper copy, of a new landscape design that was requested from a commitment on what the landscape design could look like, we understand that there's residents who are interested about what the plaza could bring, and there's also residents concerned about what visually that could look like for the city, and in response to those concerns, we did engage with the landscape designer to provide you all with a proof of concept, which the landscape designer titled "The Wave" in honor of the City of Luna Pier's lakefront character, and this would provide for a landscape that resembles one of the waves of Lake Erie, it is a winding path of tall grasses and native perennials, and it would be winding through several arborvitaries. This would strike the balance, we believe, in the dual interests of not only the City of Luna Pier's residents' justifiable concerns about the visuals, as well as the interests of the business owners that are currently at the plaza with being concerned about whether that would completely cover their businesses and not allow them to have any kind of advertisement for the businesses. The one thing that I did want to bring your attention to, which our landscape designer almost got correct, is on Page 1, the planting area, which is outlined in pink, it does intersect with some of the M dot adjacent properties, the property that is the Luna Pier Plaza does extend about three feet north of the Luna Pier sign, and again, this is only a proof of concept, if this was to be approved, we would, of course, go through all state and local permitting and make sure that, you know, we're doing everything properly and not infringing on anyone's land rights, however, we would be able to complete this, complete this proof of concept to be completely on the land that is owned by Luna Pier Plaza. That's all I really have for you as far as our concept goes, we've come before you, you understand what our proposals are, so, once again, we ask that you approve the MFO overlay, and that's all I have for you. Yes?
One thing, don't touch the Christmas tree, when you, okay, that Christmas tree needs to stay whatever you do.
It's in there, it's existed. We have zero intention of touching the Christmas tree, and that is.
We know where you're at, if you do.
We, I made sure to tell that to our landscape designer, but that's all I have for you.
I have a question. So if it should pass, what's the timeframe of work starting, business starting, landscaping, everything?
That would be more of a question for me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Roberts, Troy, Michigan, I forget my voice, kind of lost it a little bit, I will do first want to say for the record, we did actually patch the parking lot, so Freddie was kind of, I guess we would say, mistaken on that point. You know, I'm here, you know, I've said a lot here, and I've answered a lot of questions, and, you know, I'm not sure there's a ton more for me to say that I haven't already said, but I'm kind of here just to say that, you know, we're here to work with the city, and, you know, I'm not just saying that, you know, when the, when I was in front of you guys four or five months ago, and you said, hey, we need more information here, well, we did our best to provide you guys with more information. When we had our proposal on the highway side of the strip mall, and we were told we'd rather have it on the other side, we moved our plans and moved it on the other side. When there was a request for studies to back up some of the claims we're making, we provided a list of studies. When there was a request for landscaping, you know, we hired a landscaping designer and put together a landscaping plan. So, you know, we're here to work with you, I've been trying to make myself available to everyone after these meetings to answer questions, and I'll make myself available here to answer questions, but that is to say, you know, we're here to work with you, and we think we've done a pretty good job to demonstrate that so far, and that's not just the trunk or treat, or the parking to the scouts, and the Christmas tree lighting, but kind of everything we've done, you've asked us to do something, and we've done it. And, you know, as a show of good faith, and, you know, as a show that, you know, kind of put my money where my mouth is in terms of working with you and making my commitments more than just words, I'm going to do something a little unconventional, which is I'm proposing to make this rezoning conditional, and what that means is I would condition this rezoning to only being, and can I have a minute? The four units on the east side, which is the side away from the highway of the plaza, it's a 10-unit plaza, we would limit ourselves to only be occupying at max four units on the side away from the highway. This is a little unconventional to someone to voluntarily condition their own rezoning proposal, and I'm not sure if there's any extralegal steps that need to be taken, my understanding would be by me bringing it up and agreeing to it, that could be made part of this vote, if there's anything else I need to do, let me know. If there's anything else I need to do, let me know, but I am prepared to do that today. So, with that said, you know, if you have any more questions on timing... So, in terms of timing, landscaping is something we could move on fairly quick, because it's not something we need permits on. For the actual construction, you know, generally, I've found it takes an architect about four to six weeks to put together plans. From there, we do have to submit those to the city for approval and get construction permits. I'm not sure what the process is here, how fast that is. You know, that can be anywhere from two weeks to two months, just depending on the city. But from there, you know, we plan on getting this going quickly. You know, I want to get this thing open. I want to get this thing going, and I'm going to do everything I can to do that. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mayor, do you want me to address the offer of conditional zoning?
Yes, yes.
So, the zoning enabling act allows a property owner or an applicant for rezoning to condition the request on certain items. Typically, when you have a rezoning, and it's rezoned to a district, say, a commercial district, the property owner can make any use of that property that's allowed within that commercial district, including principal permitted uses or special land uses. The city cannot require a conditional zoning or rezoning. The city cannot ask an applicant to condition a rezoning request pursuant to the zoning enabling act. But a property owner or an applicant who has authority can offer conditional rezoning. And that's what Mr. Roberts has just done. So, if council is inclined to, when it comes to a vote, to follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission and to expand the overlay district, you can reference that item of conditional rezoning that's offered. And typically, what we would do is put that into a contract, and that contract would be signed by the property owner. It would be binding upon the property owner. It would be beneficial to the city, and that contract would then be recorded at the Register of Deeds office. It would be a condition that's imposed on that property from here until eternity, unless both the city and the property owner agree to remove that condition. So, that's basically how that works. I just wanted you to be aware of how that works and whether or not you... If, if council decides to approve the rezoning and enlarge or expand the overlay district, you could make that part of your motion, and then we would work to do the paperwork. Typically, there's a lot more that goes into it, like hours of operation and all that. But all those things, by and large, are already addressed in our marijuana ordinance, so... But this is a, I mean, that is a good faith offer by the property owner to keep it in a specified area, and I guess we would have to identify it by... We'd be able to do that.
So, there is 10 front parcels, so we would say only the four far east parcels.
So, for your consideration.
Yes, thank you for that explanation.
Neil has a question.
So, would parking have to be designated as well? Or, I mean... So, if we're talking about this being conditional, they're only talking about the units of the building, whereas normally, we would be going, you know, property boundaries of a parcel. So, how would that play in if...
In terms of them designating where parking would be for the retail marijuana set?
I think I'm more asking the question of how would the line of delineation for the area of the overlay be established if parking has to be included in that? Or is it just going to be drawn around the building, then it goes on its merry way, or...
When the Planning Commission went through its process, did they, did the Planning Commission show an actual overlay in the line, the expansion area that the overlay would be expanded by? Or is it just the parcel that the plaza sits on?
It was the limits of the parcel itself.
It's the parcel.
Okay. And so, then, maybe I don't understand what you're asking, Neil, but that would be the overlay, the limits of the parcel, and if the parking, I assume that the parking is included within the limits of the parcel, or no?
May I chime in? I think what Neil's asking is because there is areas in the zoning overlay that are offset, like the public spaces, is that what you're referring to, Neil? Like, what sort of parking, how does that shape the parking?
People are going to park where they want to park.
I think I may, if you don't mind, I think what he's saying is, does the entire parcel get in the overlay? And the answer is yes, the entire parcel is in the overlay. It's just that that parcel in the overlay is subject to special restrictions. So, if you're looking at the map, the entire parcel's in there. It's just that that parcel is then subject to those restrictions.
And if you guys would ever just sell, that restriction carries over to the next...
Yeah, the only way that restriction would be relieved if both the property owner and the city agreed to that condition.
Not one or the other, but both.
Did that, did that, did you get your answer?
Like, I just, if it doesn't have to be visually outlined, and it's verbally conditional, then that's...
Yeah, it would be, it would be described in a contract that gives X, 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 or, or the mill for use, or, you know, however that... We can describe it verbally, and actually, it doesn't hurt to attach and exhibit to the contract to show visually what you apply on the contract. If they did the objective, I would be more... Sorry for the diversion.
No, that's, it's very important, because I...
It's not a diversion.
I've really, you know, I discussed it with Mike Dembski, when he mentioned that word one time, and I didn't know what it meant, but it obviously has to be, it's nothing we can ask for. In this case, we...
The floor, I believe, is open for public comment.
Connie Cole, 10644 Lakeside Drive. I just want to say, I would love to see improvements at the plaza, and I think that the risk of approving this is not significant from the standpoint of, since I've been here and Green Labs has been in town, I have not seen any significant downside of the business being here in town. And then, I've also attended a lot of meetings, and while I've heard a couple concerns, and I've heard some positives, there has not been an overwhelming outrage or concern from what I've seen. We've had very little attendance at meetings showing concern about the overlay. So, it's kind of, it's my opinion only, but I do think it would be great to see improvements at the plaza. I think we need that positive action within the city to try and move us forward. And I think it would also have some positive benefits from a financial perspective. May not be significant, but it's still positive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Connie? The floor is open. See Mike getting up?
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. Thank you for your service. Michael Lucarelli, 4642 Ellen Cove Road, Luna Pier, Michigan. I'm here to provide City Council and Mayor with some backup information related to the development of the downtown I've been working on for about two years, but at least a year and a half through Planning Commission. The reason I'm coming to council is there's components of the development that Planning Commission really has no authority to act, so to speak. Once council says yes to three options for the development, then, then I, of course, would go back to planning with the final site plans and such, so that, you know, they can basically move forward on the development plan. So, what I really want to do tonight was simply provide all the backup information over the past eight years that I've been involved in this, including, there has been four other, this is the fourth development that I've worked on. None have made it this far. The original development was initially a beautiful street of side pavers and buildings and stuff, which we tried to do, but obviously, that didn't happen, so we just keep going, you know, with what we have to work with, so that's fine. So, of the three options, I'm hoping that you will kind of look at these. My preference is probably 1, 2, 3, but again, all three, I think, are doable. I'm not asking for any decisions tonight at all. I'm just going to drop the information. I will be back at the next council meeting to answer any questions, and I would like it to be on the agenda for the following council meeting, if at all feasible, for the July 10th meeting. And once council makes a decision, then, of course, I got to go back to planning with the site plan based on your approval of that issue, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's why I'm, you're going to probably fall asleep reading all this stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate everything.
With that, the floor is open. Is any more public comment? Going once, twice? Okay, we'll close the community input section of the meeting. We really appreciate all your comments and how much you care, and just being here tonight. We, good or bad, love to hear from the public. Moving on to council action, starting with the big one. Planning Commission recommendation, marijuana facility overlay. Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation of adding parcel 585100300750 at 10552 Evans Drive into the marijuana facility overlay district as presented, along with the addition of the offered conditional rezoning that was spoken of tonight. And wait the reading.
I support.
We have a motion. We have support. Discussion?
I think the only thing that I would have added is, since we're doing the conditional overlay, if there is a contract that will be setting forth terms to follow, I think that should be part of the motion.
I would direct that question to that side of the table.
Well, because we have to do some sort of an outline to specify what is included and what's not, so there has to be supporting documentation that follows along with this.
Does that need to be part of the motion, is what she's asking?
Yeah, I would recommend that. That's an excellent point, because there does need to be an agreement that specifies the offered condition. So, I think that part of the motion, as soon as I...
Could you, could you help us with that verbiage?
Can we add it, or you want me to restate everything?
No, you don't have to restate everything. Just that, that a conditional rezoning agreement will be prepared to be signed by both the city and the property owner, which will outline what was offered by the applicant property owner in terms of where the retail marijuana facility will be located and in which units it's...
Charlie quit writing.
You got all that, right?
I heard that in the motion, and I hear all the detail of it.
You might be able to add what was declared by our lawyer.
And that, too.
And we do have the advantage of going back to the recording, as long as my phone holds out there.
And you still second?
I still support. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I want to add everything that our lawyer has said.
And I support you.
And we have support.
And that, and that, and that.
Okay. Is there more discussion on that? I will chime in that I agree with what was presented here tonight, that my concern is what that strip mall is going to look like. We, it was built, it, it was my neighbor that built it, great guy, but terrible businessman, and it went back to the bank. Somebody else took it over. Nothing came out of there. It declined. It was blown again. Diligent efforts were made to make it there, and it's declined over the years. It actually has more work put in in the last couple of years. And I, I'm, I am more concerned about a dilapidated property there as you enter the city, more than some businesses there, and one of them is a marijuana business. That's just my personal opinion of that. I would rather see a marijuana business in there, and...
And some improvement to the property.
And improvements to the property. That's just, that's my opinion on it.
We have to do roll call, can we make official?
Yes.
Charlie?
If there's any more, any more discussion, I want to give everybody a chance.
I actually appreciate the conditional zoning offer. So, actually, that, that was a major concern for a lot of citizens, and I think that is an excellent...
Okay, I think we're ready for a roll call vote. Wong?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Needing?
Yes.
Skatulski?
Yes.
Ozlooper?
Yes.
Wakeman?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner? Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes, please.
I do want to thank her for how hard they worked, and how engaged they were. Scott and Andrew both. Resolution number 979, adopting the master plan.
I propose a motion to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation to adopt the master plan as presented, we've been reading.
Support.
We have motion. We have support. Any, any discussion?
It's been a lot of work. Everybody really did a lot of work on this, and it is, there has been a few changes, so, but it's...
And besides planning and council, thank you, Connie, for...
Yes.
Everything.
Everything.
Thank you, everyone who worked on the master plan.
Yes.
Much appreciated.
And Hunter, who is here. Thank you all.
Ed's associate that was here last meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion on it? Let's do a roll call vote. Ozlooper?
Yes.
Skatulski?
Yes.
Wakeman?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Needing?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion carried. Appointment of Donna Vance to Luna Pier Housing Commission. Do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve the appointment of Donna Vance to Luna Pier Housing Commission for a five-year term, expiring 1/15/2030, per Mayor Gardner's nomination.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion?
You said she served before, so she has some experience on it?
Yes, yep. We can, since it's not a paid position, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carried. Thank you, Donna Vance, for stepping up the important role. Applied Innovation Canon Copier Contract. Do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve five-year contract with Applied Innovation to lease a Canon copier image runner Vance DX C3930I as presented, waving the reading.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. Wong?
Yes.
Wakeman?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Needing?
Yes.
Skatulski?
Yes.
Ozlooper?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner? Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. Radius and radius contract. Do I have a motion?
Can I ask a question? Is that Stephanie?
Stephanie.
And Chris.
Yes. Just verifying that I was giving you correct information.
Thank you all. It's been a great process.
And his associate that was here last meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'll tell you.
Thank you.
Any discussion on it? Let's do a roll call vote.
Oz Lupe.
Yes.
Skatulski.
Yes.
Wakeman.
Yes.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Needing.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. Appointment of Donna Vance to Luna Pier Housing Commission. Do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve the appointment of Donna Vance to Luna Pier Housing Commission for a five-year term, expiring 115, 2030, per Mayor Gardner's nomination.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion?
You said she served before, so she has some experience on it.
Yes, yep. We can, since it's not a paid position, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carried. Thank you, Donna Vance, for stepping up the important role. Applied innovation canon copier contract. Do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve five-year contract with applied innovation to lease a canon copier image runner Vance DX C3930I as presented, waiving the reading.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion? Let's do a roll call vote.
Juan.
Yes.
Oz Lupe.
Yes.
Needing.
Yes.
Skatulski.
Yes.
Oz Lupe.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. City Council input and information. I think we start on this side this time?
No input.
Counselor Juan?
No input for me. Thank you.
I would like to discuss the rental of this Water Tower Park and how it applies to the park. As you know, last weekend, there was a very large inflatable and obstacle course, and I've just recently found out that our sign for Roper Pond was pulled out of the ground and now has to be replaced because it was actually rotted.
Yes.
And the city's working on that, but where's the responsibility? They should not have pulled that out of the ground.
Actually, we, we had a discussion of that, you know, and Charlie. We need to put in size limits on a tent and a bounce house. We learned a little bit from that. Now, the sign, we looked at it, and it got knocked down by somebody delivering tables, and they, the person who rented, saw it happen, pointed it out to us, gave us their, all the contact information. When we started looking, you could have leaned on that sign to knock it down.
I know, but it, you know, that was just an, I do have pictures if anyone wants to see it, and it's because a citizen contacted me about it, because they came down and just, and I know they still could have come to the park, but they felt uncomfortable because they had taken up so much of the park.
Yes, we discussed that, and we need to do that because if there's a tent with 100 people out here, the capacity of this building...
They could be inside the building.
Yes. It, it causes some, some problems. In event of a storm, you've got to take shelter in this building. You're using the facilities of this building and the occupancies based on the capacity of the facilities. So yes, we agree that we need to redo that contract and put some limitations into what kind of a tent you can put, a maximum size. The bounce house was enormous. I think we could look at that.
So isn't that all the contract that things?
Yes, we have that contract, and it won't take much to just do that and then vote on it, and put those restrictions in, and go through our process and make sure everybody checks off that you agree to these, these terms of that, of that contract. Now, the sign, it's in really, we had no idea it was in that, that a shape.
I know.
So Dave, as he's bringing it, he's, he's going to show me tomorrow that, he's not sure if we can save the sign. The sign itself is really rotted. So it's unfortunate, but I don't, I don't think we have to get too bogged down on that because we're a little bit at fault there with the condition of our sign, but we definitely, it was a learning experience for us that we need to put some restrictions in place and regulate that a little more closely.
I agree.
So I'm glad you brought that up.
Who, who's going to be working on that? Is that a Park and Recs proposal, or?
I can do some research on the size of the bounce houses. I don't think it was a Park and Recs, we never made the contract.
No, no, it was done, it was done through an effort through council.
Just assignment of duty is always a good thing.
Yep, yep, and Charlie and I were discussing it, and thank you, Charlie, because I, I kind of, I thought you'd be eager to work on those things. Anything else, Counselor Skatulski?
I see.
Anything? Okay.
I see that from Amanda's side.
Counselor Oz Lupe?
I have nothing at this time.
Unfortunately, the amount of police will not be attending the Freedom Fest this year. After many, many years, they have short staff, and it's, yeah, double booking and all this other kind of bummer stuff. And I'm very disappointed I won't get to pet my horses this year, but Duke's Farm is stepping up, and they're bringing a petting zoo for two hours, from 5:30 to 7:30, which once the vendors get out of First Street Park, they'll set up there.
Okay, but the...
I already talked to the city insurance.
Mountain Patrol, you say?
Will not be here this year.
Yeah, they were...
Unless something happens, and, you know, Dave Davidson called me last night.
They're looking for applicants. I know people have horses and want to be a mountain patrol, they're looking for applicants.
We're also having a 50/50 raffle. Pre tickets are on sale at the Legion. The Freedom Festival is going to split our 50% of the winnings with the Legion, so it'll be 50 to the winner, 25 to the Freedom Fest, and 25 to the Legion, for everything that they've done for us throughout this whole fundraising process. And if there are any volunteers on the day of the Freedom Fest, I will put you to work. Just call me, text me, knock on my door.
That's actually three days of really hard work, because it starts on Friday, very, very early in the morning. All, all day Friday, all day Saturday, and if we have, and then Sunday cleaning up. So if we could have volunteers to just do a little bit here and there, that would really lighten the load on the people.
I'm good.
The only thing I have, I was glad to see that the tires were cleaned up down on Erie Road, and I noticed that somebody put a couple of new trash barrels down there. We spoke about this before, I believe, by email, about having an Erie Road committee that focuses on improvements, and then there's been no mention of it before people, so can we get rolling on that and get that perhaps on the agenda if it needs be, to start a committee, to start making improvements and try to clean up the area a little bit and keep it clean and intended to?
Yeah, I know you're very passionate about that area.
I nominate Amanda to chair that effort.
I second.
Second.
All in favor?
I...
Actually, I think you'd be the perfect person for it.
And I said I would gladly do it, but I can't do everything myself.
Yeah, yeah, if you can put together a plan, let's bring it to council, and we, I won't go into detail, but security has definitely stepped up there. The Sheriff's Department is helping us with it, and we are doing some things to prevent that. And I thank you to the DPW workers.
Is everyone aware that they're still working on getting rid of the tires, because there were so many, they could only take a portion?
Oh, they just took up some house?
It's going to take months, because they can only bring...
I see.
About 600 tires.
Yeah, and they could only take 100, 125 each month.
So we're just holding them while we slowly dispose of them?
Yes, because the county...
It's a lot of man hours, a lot of labor.
The county has a program that they will take them, and I'm really grateful to them because otherwise it would cost at least $2 apiece for us to dispose of them.
Same, County.
At a, yeah, yeah, plus labor, and it's not even legal for us to haul them, so we'd have to get licenses to haul them. It is, we're really grateful to the county for taking care of that, and the DPW workers, because they really worked hard.
I am appreciative of it, because we all know blight attracts blight, so I'm glad they're not at least sitting down there.
Yep, and there is stepped up security down there.
They're behind the water treatment, I think, right now, aren't they?
Yep.
Oh, and the bench, we, the bench is going to be getting placed at the Allen Cove Entry Park. It's marked, we're just waiting on Dave Gouts and the guys to get it put in.
Yep.
Oh, I did not get to mention, can I have another minute?
Go ahead, go ahead, yep.
We did make $500 on the metal, scrap metal on dumpster day.
Nice.
And I, I want permission to maybe get a plan together. There is a lot of scrap metal at DPW. If we could get a plan together and volunteers, and maybe that proceeds could go to Park and Recs?
I have a little I can add to that because I missed the scrap metal collection. Yes, we can, we can talk about that, and you're right, there is some back there. I think that's, everybody?
Mayor?
Yes.
It was asked for, and I'd like to give you a little update on the blight.
Oh, yes, that's right, okay.
And so the, what I would like to do early next week, if we could, I'd like to have a meeting with, with you, Jim, and with Mike Dumski, Neil, if you're available, perhaps, because what, I'm almost done with this, but what I want to have in place is through the Home Rule Cities Act and the enabling legislation for municipal civil infractions sets up a situation where we can issue municipal civil infractions for blight. If the individual doesn't pay the citation, the law also allows us to, after 30 days of adjudication, to, and I want to make sure the teeth is in the ordinance for this, to enter the property, to abate the blight situation, and then to charge the cost back against the tax rule for the parcel in question. So what I want to specifically talk about is what mechanism we have in place and what we might need to do. For instance, if I'm a, if I'm a property owner and I have a blighted situation, and our, one of our police officers issues me municipal civil infraction, and I choose not to pay it, but I want to challenge it. Stranger things have happened. So there has to be a process in place for the challenge, and if you lose the challenge, then the 30 days start to run, and if you don't clean it up, I want the city to have the availability through a private contractor or through our, our DPW people to enter the property, remove the, remove the light, and then to charge it back. So I want to make sure we have that mechanism in place, if that makes sense to you.
Yes.
I apologize, I wanted to have it done before now, but I'm hot on it now. I spent a lot of time on it over the last couple of days, so just so you know what my thought process is.
Okay.
You know, a lot of other places will just file, file a nuisance lawsuit in Circuit Court, and you can go through the same process, but this, this is going to be quicker and I think more efficient, and more efficient time-wise and more efficient cost-wise for the city, and that's what we're looking for. Once we get this program rolling, I think you'll see a marked difference, a marked difference in how you're able to get blighted situations taken care of, because if they don't pay it, say, okay, we're coming, we're taking it, and you're going to pay for it when you pay your taxes.
One way or another.
As long as it gets approved.
Thank you for that input.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Any other input? I think we got it. Everybody, thank you, everyone, for the hard work, and this June has been a stressful month, and it's going to be the entire month. It's going to be stressful because we have a lot of council action. I appreciate everybody's hard work on that. It's a terrible month to have a birthday. I'll just skip it until July, so...
Happy birthday, Jim.
We don't have any correspondence, don't have any general information to share. Future meeting dates, Parks and Recreation, Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, 7:00 PM at the library. Flood and Erosion, Tuesday, June 17th, 7:00 PM, Water Tower Park, and we are looking for members for the Flood and Erosion Commission. I can say that the pump down there is, is functional now, they've, they've been working on it. DDA, Tuesday, June 24th, 7:00 PM at the lighthouse. So if you want to see the inside of the lighthouse, you are, it's a public meeting, you're welcome to attend. Planning, Tuesday, June 24th, 6:00 PM here at Water Tower Park. City Council, Thursday, June 26th, 2025, 7:00 PM, Water Tower Park, and that's our end of the fiscal year meeting.
Planning Commission does have chairs open, too?
Yes, we do have seats.
And DDA.
And DDA.
And Park and Recs. Everybody in council.
Yeah. So let's, let's...
I propose a motion to adjourn.
We got a motion, we got support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Hearing the adjourn?